Welcome to the twenty-ninth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence your cell phones, electronic devices. If you're appearing here today, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names. And if you're here to testify on any agenda item, please come forward, be sworn in, introduce yourself and spell your name. So, Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for action.
Yes Chair, motion for the approval of the regular and executive session minutes of the twenty-seventh meeting as previously circulated. Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor. I vote aye, the regular and executive session minutes of the twenty-seventh meeting are approved. Let's move into the public hearing. Application number, agenda item number one, transfer application number one nine dash one four nine seven one from Nara K and K L S E, give me a chance market. Set it to my right is Mr. Kim, K I N. We have no changes to the rule. Ms. Hoi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protest, zero written support applications that statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the January twenty-fourth pool mirror hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioner?
One question. Mr. Kim? I noticed that you do not have any experience with liquor, you don't have any prior liquor experience, is that correct?
First time.
Okay, you understand you are obligated as a licensee, should we approve the license to follow all the rules and regulations of the commission? You understand you are obligated as a licensee, should we approve the license to follow all the rules and regulations of the commission? And you do have a lawyer, so I would urge you or encourage you to speak to your lawyer if you have any questions about how to conduct your business, okay? Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve transfer application number one nine dash one four nine seven one, second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor. I vote, agenda item number one, transfer application number one nine dash one four nine seven one is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number two, this is a special license application, application number one nine dash one five eight eight nine from Free Spirits LLC. Gentlemen?
Good afternoon Commissioners, Anthony Suasugu, member of Free Spirits, with me is one of our managing members, Matthew Choi.
Thank you very much, Commissioners?
It's an expanded footprint now, it's a larger area than the previous ones.
Correct.
Can you folks have your street closure approved?
Yes.
Any issues with tenants in the area?
Not that we've been aware of, and we work closely with Howard Hughes and Ward, and they haven't let us know.
So the tenants are made aware of the street closure?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion to approve application number one nine dash one five eight eight nine, second?
Moved in second, all those in favor. I vote, agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one five eight eight nine is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. This is a preliminary hearing, agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one five zero two one from Rangoon Boomi. Hello, Rangoon?
Hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, now this is Commissioner Keat, he appears for the applicant, to my right is Clint Syke, K A Q N, last name Missy, I'm appearing on behalf of Attorney Neil Mceonan.
Chair, due to time constraints, I would excuse myself for this matter. Thank you. Commissioners?
I've read the investigative report, I have no additions or corrections, one comment I'll make is Mr. Syke will get the permission for the mezine before the licenses issue. As noted on the investigative report, page five.
This is for the old Epic?
Yes. And it's primarily a lunch business, it's gonna have some evening business, but it's gonna be primary lunch and move the business plan to cater mostly to HP students.
I wasn't aware there was a mezine floor.
That building's kind of a funding building, but yeah. You want that clarified, the public, you know, with Ms. Mceonan, over to that's clarified.
And is the mezine included in your pro-vident?
Yes.
And you're gonna be using it primarily for storage? Storage of alcohol? Okay, motion to approve application number one nine dash one five zero two one, second?
Moved in second, all those in favor? I vote aye, agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one five zero two one is approved.
Thank you, I'm gonna get my client to the bench.
Yeah, he's got one more. He's got number four.
Okay, yeah.
Does he need to?
We should, for the record?
Yeah, so that I can advise for you.
Yeah. Correct? Thank you. Take your time, dear, take your time. Okay, so let's call agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one five three three zero from Two Tuffle LLC.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Member of Commissioner Keat, he on behalf of the applicant, to my left is Yuki Shoji.
Thank you. Chair, due to a conference, I would excuse myself. Thank you.
I've read and reviewed the investigative report, I just got one addition. I understand there's concern about the noise containment outside. If you look at the floor plan, there are some folding glass doors. Because that property is actually timeshare, they require to muffle the noise, so what they're gonna do is when they play music, they're gonna close the glass doors, so they'll contain the music. And the type of music that's gonna be played is like jazz.
Jazz.
And I see that Mr. Shoji has a lot of experience in the restaurant management.
She does, and her husband's got a lot of experience in managing businesses.
So let me just make a comment, because you know the issues that we have had with that property.
Yes.
Very mindful, should the commission, is that husband in the back there?
No, no.
Should the commission?
Another licensee.
Should the commission decide to approve this?
Yeah.
Be very mindful, because that is a very sticky area. You're aware of that, right?
And they've had a temporary license since December, and they have not had issues. They have an extension of premises for New Year's Eve, which worked out quite well. But we're gonna try to keep monitoring it, and Chair, as you mentioned, I think that's something they need to do, because there are issues.
Commissioners?
The dining area, where notes that there's gonna be a chain demarcating, demarcating the licensed area? What is, what exactly is that area, is it outdoor?
It's, it's part of the lobby.
Oh, it's part of the lobby?
Yeah, it's part of the lobby area. See, because if you see, the outdoor area is actually demarcated. Hard to see off, because you hear different lighting. But it's actually the lobby area, because their dining area actually closes the lobby, so it's gotta be part of separate.
Okay, so it doesn't go into the?
And it's kind of behind that fountain that they have in the lobby, yeah?
Yeah, it is.
You are correct. The Polynesian man used to entertain there. Correct?
I'm distracted, because this DJ is so adorable, but I totally, I didn't have that, I forgot what I was gonna add. Okay, so motion to approve application number one nine dash one five three three zero, second?
Moved in second, all those in favor? I vote, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one five three three zero is approved. Can we have Commissioner Miyashiro back, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's well aware of what's going on.
Take your time, take your time, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners?
Good afternoon.
Okay, calling agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one five four three seven from K T Y eight eight one six LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Kuang Yuan, that's spelled K U A N, last name Y U A N.
My name is Trudy Ling Papina, T R U D Y F Y N N, P A J I N.
We're the owners of K T Y eight eight one six LLC, doing business as style off hairsty.
Commissioners?
Go ahead, no, go ahead, take it.
I just have a question about, now that you're on the server, alcohol. And you noted that there is only one restroom in the premise, is there another one that is available for you?
Yes, there is, there's one that's within the unit, and immediately adjacent to it, there's a second bathroom.
The second bathroom is currently not recognized, right?
Uh, it's not part of the, our unit, you have to access it from the outside.
And you have landlord?
I'm sorry.
The landlord?
Oh, provide access, yes.
Okay. So my son's a barber, so I'm aware of how, what the concept is, and I get it. But the issue of, you know, these are, I'm assuming the stalls are rentable, right?
Uh, correct, in fact, we operate strictly as rental.
So, let's walk through this, and I come in and I'm gonna do my hair, and what is there? You hand out like a menu or something of choices of drinks, or how does it work?
So immediately, when you enter the premise, there is a bar area, that also extends to the reception area. And we will have a menu of beer and wine that will be served on the bar, and that'll be available.
So just beer and wine?
Correct, we're, we're applying just for beer and wine.
Okay, so, let's walk through the whole thing, right? Because this is a little different operation, so I sit down, you know, I have an appointment with Jungle. You ask me, right, can I offer you anything, or I walk up to the bar, right? What happens after that?
So, one of the managers will be at the bar, and we're the only ones that'll be allowed to get, just commie contact, or serve alcohol. So, when you come in and you let us know you have an appointment, or inform your stylist and your appointments here, and while you're waiting if you're lucky ravage, then we will serve you that beverage.
And I pay at the bar?
Yes, at the bar.
Okay, and when you say we, is it you, you two are the only ones?
Well, us two, I'm a third manager, so we're husband and wife team, and my brother-in-law is going to be the third manager.
So I noticed on your bio that, you know, there's not any liquor experience, yeah?
That's correct.
And, you know, quite different bio, it's not even haircutting or nothing, so this concept is, I am, I'm assuming is kind of according to you guys, but you guys are, you guys are gonna go and get your guys cards and everything like that and do the training that's involved with it.
Yes.
Okay, so another question, so I sit down, I get my hair done, it's two hours into it or one hour? Do I get a refill, or I gotta go back up there, or do you guys float, come back there to the back? Okay, with the foil and everything in my hair, come to the front and get it?
The space, it's, it's an open space, and it's not packed.
Okay, just checking, just checking, seeing how this works, okay?
So the bar that you're speaking of, that, 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 it's not really noted on the plans, but I'm assuming it's that counter?
Yes, there's, if you're looking at it, in this orientation, from the bottom is the front entrance, and it's the object immediately to the right after the entrance, that's the bar there.
Do you folks receive a copy of this report? Investigative licensing report? I'm gonna direct you to the bottom of page three, starting at the bottom of page three. And this is in regards to your stylist not being registered employees, that they're contractors, so because this is our, our rules and laws were not designed for your type of business, and so there is an issue with this, that, that your staff is not really your staff. But they are going to be on a licensed premises, and so therefore, you know, they're, they're made with the law be considered employees, so you know, they, you will be responsible for their conduct, and they're not supposed to be, you know, let's read it for the record. The underlined in bold portion, shall employ only persons in that section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed, who are registered with the commission prior to the start of employment. So, having them be independent contractors, where they're not technically your employees, is a...
And actually, I'm to clarify that, they're not even contractors, the relationship between us and the stylist are of a landlord tenant who charges flat rent, and it's not a commission.
I understand that, but they are going to be on the licensed premises in the area where liquor is served and consumed and sold.
Our initial intent is, should the commission choose to accept our application, and we want to request if the commission would consider a waiver of the definition, in this particular case of employees, and not extending that to the renters?
For the record, that's not our responsibility, we're here to act on the agenda item.
Understood, understood. This was pointed out to us by the investigators, and we are, we are looking at ways to comply with that.
And so, and going along these same lines, you said that they're not even, that they're, it's more like a landlord tenant relationship?
Correct.
So what if one of the stylists wants to have a beer, a glass of wine while they're, while they're working?
We have current, we currently have written policy, not allowing that. Anyone that's on the premise as, as a renter, or one of the owners, are not permitted to consume, possess alcohol. We have, we currently have written policies on that.
What about, you know, I understand that hopefully your business is busy, and what Commissioner Donabon said is go on with that scenario, where she's getting her hair done, she doesn't wanna go to the front to go get another drink, you know? And you, the stylist, her stylist says, oh, don't worry, I'll go get you one, I'll go get you a refill. What would happen in that scenario?
And that again, is a scenario that we eliminate completely, and eliminate, because stylists are not only one of us three can even be in contact with the, with, with any alcoholic rubbish. That whole bar area is off, it's not, just other stylists are, stylists don't have access to the bar area. They're not allowed to go into the area, and in fact, we, we, you know, equipment fridge, we have locks on them too. So, we, we, we're making a point for that, not just.
Okay, and let's keep going down those lines, all right? So she, she, she's not allowed, the stylist doesn't get it on, but she goes to the front and gets another one, and she doesn't finish it. She's done with her appointment, leaves her glass of wine, half drop on top of the counter, and the stylist now is cleaning up for their next appointment. What happens with that half glass of wine?
That, in that scenario, we will, one, all the containers are disposable, so for us, we make, we make routine rounds to, you know, as long as, we make routine rounds to just take care of towels and smocks and cakes. So, emptying the trash, so part of that is, we'll go around and, and if there's containers left, empty cups, then we'll toss them, we'll discard them.
And when you say we, you're talking about?
We assume the managers, to clarify, one of the managers.
One more question. So can my, my barber buy me a drink?
No.
So it's not like, you're my customer a long time, just have a seat and I'll go get it for you, and I'll go pay.
No, that is not something.
There's one important thing you left out when I went to the bar. There was one most important thing, let's go back to, I get there to the bar and I check in and I'm gonna see my stylist Jungle. I see you at the bar, you know what I'm looking for?
We will ask for your identification to prove your age.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
I have, I just have one question, where you represented your procedure, are you currently serving alcohol?
No, absolutely not.
Absolutely not?
Absolutely not.
But you're very familiar with the rules.
Absolutely, and this is something we've communicated, that if in the case we do become licensed, these are the rules.
I have one more question, just out of curiosity, because this concept is not a new concept. You guys obviously got this concept from the mainland, or from someone else who's, who has done it? And I'm assuming not in this state, right? What are you basing, how well does this service complement your business? Because there's, the question that always comes up is, a lot of businesses do it as comple- you can go to a large store, you can go to Anshu's, you can, as a shopper, you get it as a complimentary, because it's a valued it's just part of the service. So, when you thought of this concept, or you decided to introduce it, having the challenges that you know you're gonna have? What was the marketing, or what is the draw?
In our case, because our business model is unique, and we operate purely as rental, we focused on, you know, how do we improve and enhance the experience of the salon patron, so our tenant's client. So that's where we thought this could be an overall enhancement to that experience. And secondly, from a revenue standpoint, we are just simply a rental operation, so we charge a flat rent. And so we look to this as an additional source of revenue, so in that sense, it would never make sense for us to try to come that or bundle that within kind of service, because we don't offer those services.
That's really interesting, because you're the CPA, yeah? Okay, so now I understand the numbers concept and how this is working and why, but now I get it, I get it. Okay, thank you very much for being honest, because that's a very honest answer, thank you.
Mr. Johan, I have a question. So we're here for preliminary hearing, between now and the public hearing, would you be willing to provide us with permission with their landlord tenant agreement, and the kind of contractor agreement, or whatever agreement you have with the society?
Absolutely, thank you.
Motion to convene into executive session, second?
Moved in second, all those in favor? I vote aye, we are now in executive session. Okay, we are now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any comments?
Yes Chair. Let me say, Juan. We do want to caution you, and about what we talked about on page three, regarding registration of employees. Now, in the public hearing, we'd like you to work with the administration, and remedy, remedy this discrepancy. Because, like I said, our rules and laws were not designed for your type of business. But they are our rules and laws, which all licensees need to comply with. So, we understand you have a unique business model, and please work with the administration to remedy that discrepancy.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
So, motion to approve application number one nine dash one five four three seven, second?
Moved in second, all those in favor? I vote, agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one five four three seven is approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let's call agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one five four nine nine from Aloha Blowouts LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Members, Kenneth who are appearing for the applicant, to my right is Roger Wall, W A L L. He is a manager of the applicant. We have no changes to the investigative report, but I can give a brief description of the operations. First of all, all of the stylists will be employees of the, of the applicant. They will all go through serveterium to get their, their cards. If you look at the floor plan of the operation, there is a waiting area when customer enters. That's where the bar will be located, there will be a bartender there. The bartender is responsible to check IDs, he is responsible to take orders from the customers. He is responsible to serve drinks, he is responsible to, to collect the fees. In that waiting area, customers will come in with their families, they'll sit down and they'll wait, and they may then want a drink. They can either go up to the bar, or they can ask to have a drink, and the bartender will take care of it. Then, next to that waiting area is a hair bar, and that's the area where customers will receive the blow dry and stuff. They could have consumed drinks there too, and again, if they do want a drink there, they would notify or inform the stylist. The stylist would contact the bartender, the bartender would come and have the juices. Any unconsumed drinks or containers will be removed by the stylist, who will be registered as the applicant.
Commissioners, do you have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
Yes, so you said, Mr. Wu, you said that bartender will be responsible for checking identification in the waiting area? What if a patron, they didn't want a drink when they first came in, they get seated for their appointment, and then they wanna drink while they're seated? How would that process work?
He will, he's the one who serves the drinks, so he will make sure that everyone has their property identified.
The bartender? And you said that the, that the stylist can place an order with the bartender for the fine? How is that gonna work, is there some sort of electronic POS system, is there, how would that work?
They would walk over to the bar, and they tell the bartender, and the bartender will dispense the drink and carry it over to the styling station.
And in that time, when the bartender is taking drinks to patrons, is there just gonna be one bartender in the front leaning area?
We did waiting area, uh if you look at the floor plan, there's there's also a retail area where there's a product to be sold. So people, employees who be watching. To make sure nothing is.
An unattended bar.
Right.
If the bartender is busy.
If the bartender is walking out to the the hair bar.
And depending on the level of activity, there could be multiple bartenders. We observed, and we visited drive bar locations in Las Vegas where they have three bars, and we saw multiple bartenders working different shifts. And um serving customers throughout the whole salon.
So little different concept, but. I visited one and I've seen it, and I understand why the service is there. What I've also noticed is. The protection for this type of service is it's not a long term service, meaning the average client is in there for less than an hour or not. More than an hour and out of there, right? So overconsumption is not an issue um about clients sitting there and just drinking in a seat while. Unlike somewhere else where you're getting in here color for three hours or god knows what, but. Um I've seen, I've seen this this service done and I always wondered. You know, it's always at the main end that you see different diversity and services and things and concepts that come that will eventually end up here. And then you you actually, now I've seen it and this was three years ago and it's kinda, it's it's interesting. But I understand this concept, which like I said, the service is a lot shorter now. Okay, so motion to approve application number one nine dash one five four nine nine, second.
They moved in second, all of them favor. I vote, uh agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one five four nine nine is approved. Let's move into the request, agenda item number seven. Request number one eight dash one four zero two seven from H S I Hong Kong New Two Hundred Men's Company, Mr. Wu.
Mr. Wu, what we knew is the authorized agent had authority for the applicant. We have no changes to the investigative report, it's simply a business reorganization. Basically, what happened is that ninety percent stockholder is transferring forty five percent to another. Corporation, another entity, and basically all parties are related.
So it's not ninety ten?
It's forty five, forty five, ten, ninety, ninety percent is dividing their share.
The ninety is split in half, forty five, forty five, ten, right?
But all the um management's gonna stay the same?
Everything remains.
Operations all the same?
The operation, nothing changes.
This is at the airport, correct?
Yes.
Yeah?
Motion to approve request number one eight dash one four zero two seven, second.
Move in second, all of them favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh agenda item number seven, request number one eight dash one four zero two seven is approved. Let's move into agenda item. Number eight. Um this is uh request number one nine dash one four seven nine four from Sushi Shu USA.
My name is Aylin Yada, I am their registered creator and their accountant as well. Um this occurred when the um the redemption agreement. When they requested the redemption agreement to be written up by their lawyer. Um Japanese has this language where they um say. Yoroshin onigashimasu, meaning can you handle the whole thing? And uh so they were under the impression that everything pertaining to this change of membership was going to be taken care of. And uh I wasn't there, but when I received the renewal of the liquor license, I saw the name still there. And that's when I um told Mr. Nakazawa that this has to be done right away, and he was kinda surprised that it wasn't changed. But I told him that, you know, if you didn't designate your lawyer to do this for you, it wouldn't have happened, you know, so. We um we submitted the um the application. And it's my fault, I didn't fill it properly, so it was kinda lingering on. And I think it was just done like uh about three weeks ago.
And so we're we're just dealing with the request now, so if there was a violation, that that will be adjudicated at a later date.
Oh, okay.
So right now, we're dealing with your request to uh uh for a change of membership. So yeah, so Takumi USA LLC will be absorbing all shares?
Yes.
Uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one four seven nine four, second.
Move in second, all of them favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh agenda item number eight, request number one nine dash one four seven nine four is approved.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All agenda item number nine, request number one nine. Dash one six zero zero six from Core Bar LLC.
So this is a request um to use prepared infused liquors, right? Um so why don't you walk us through your request?
Um well, we wanted to like basically have different type types liquors, like a teas liquor. So we're gonna have like a lychee vodka, a long tea and these vodka, cucumber vodka, a jalapeno tequila. Um I was asked that I needed to get, I was actually going to need to get permission, we were able to do this. I did talk with the investigator Yasu about this, um he said, you guys follow the TTP kind of like regulations? And I sent him the information because this is something that a lot of bars actually do on the mainland all over. Um their stance on it, I sent that to Yasu, is that because it's post tax paid liquors. Um they don't have any issue with it because the tax has already been paid on it. Um but we still wanted to formally get the the request through here, he said, uh he can't really say anything until.
So so you folks just um want to be able to infuse them? Is there any way for these um infusions to spoil? Because you're adding fruit and vegetables inside of it, right? So jalapeno, cucumber.
You added it to two days.
So it doesn't remain. Um and do you have a process to determine when something was?
Yeah, you would put, you would date the uh, we just, we use basically masking tape. Same thing when we do our like, you know, liquor on sales and stuff, we just put the maiden on.
So you put the maiden and then there's somebody that's responsible for monitoring?
Yeah, so we basically, we have, we do a a giant prep once a week. So every Tuesday is when all the staff comes in and we do a giant prep work. So that would be the day that we would say, okay, we need to replenish this, we need to use things. So basically, it'll be a maiden, um I guess something that might be confusing is, is there an expiration date on this? Same thing is, is there expiration dates on liquor? I think there are quite a other, quite a other bars that have done this here in Hong Kong, I just don't know what the proper procedure. It's not something that hopefully I can get some clarification from the board over here.
Um well, you know, it's, this is really um a new concept for us, so. We're we're asking you folks to. You know, it's not about us telling you what to do, you propose what you want to do and then we tell you what to do. So um is, does this process change the proof of the alcohol at all?
I think um you're right, other licensees have come through and made um requests. The questions that we asked. Um that vice chairman then already asked is, what we were more concerned on is a discard date. And I'm not gonna tell you what their discard date, but there is a procedure for discard. We can't have anything pre-made and kinda sitting in a reefer and nobody knows. You know, whether it was a week ago, week ago, you know, some type of system that consistently protects the consumer as well as, you know. Whether it spoils or not, it there's still a expiration date or not, you know, so. Um I don't, I don't see a position that you have or, you know, when you you address the labeling system. But you haven't addressed as far as when you can on discarding or how that works basically.
Okay, I would say, like, just from our experience with liquor, um I would say even a month would be okay. Because it's pretty much, it's pretty much on alcohol, um. So maybe would that be an okay thing, where we'd say, hey, this has to be discarded, use it within a month. I don't think it lasts that long.
Let me ask you this, if you're coming in weekly to prep. Why would you have to keep it for a month? Is there not a process that you could look at per week? In doing, since you're doing the same process every week?
But if it's not gonna be completely used in that week, um I think because it is still gonna prob, the proof, I don't know, it will change. I think it still would last. You know, I guess maybe this example would be like a marketing machine. A lot of that stuff is pre-prepped, right? Sit, and I don't think they're gonna, you 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 top it off and you do actually dispense it in the cream machine. Doesn't mean, you know, um they actually get rid of it. Because it once you go through that, then you've gone through it, so I guess the trick is hard, it's like the volume. You're trying to say, hey, how do we know?
So just to help you out a little bit is, you would know because through your consumers and how much they basically, you know, are gonna drink.
I would say, you know, you can go through maybe five to six years a week. And so it would be more than what you perhaps, you you actually have to continuously prep that every week if you announce. That might be a better thing, so it'd be a smaller preparation so you know that you're gonna run out within a week.
Because other licensees have expressed um.
For the rotation or some things.
Well, given the the products that they're using, you know, we've seen things from passion fruit to, you know, really extreme type of ingredients. That are not always accessible to basically get, and the prep part is the part that is takes a long time. But at the same token, it doesn't, if they run out, they run out.
Right.
Which is a successful story for them, but at the same time, it's not feasible for them to make a whole bunch and then not use it within the month either.
I will, how I see it is, you just continue, you you say like, let's say you would go through five liters. Your your prep container might only be three liters, so then you would have to replenish throughout the week, that way it's always gonna be. You know, on on a fresher side, but it is, there's some things that might be like a two day infusion. Just so the flavors come out a little more stronger. So you still have to, you know, have some left up for the week, but it'll just be replenished and you don't have anything now. So it it's it's hard to say the exact number, but I would say within a week, you're always gonna have a fresh product.
Are all of these um. Ordered as straight drinks or are they are they are they mixed in some way? So you are ma- making cocktails out there, cuz these are just in these portion.
Yeah.
So I have one question, so what size containers do you mix in?
Mix the preparation?
Yeah, preparation, I mean, it's come in a ga- one gallon containers, five gallon.
I think, I think it might be five gallon.
Five gallon.
I think it might be a five gallon, you know, they are mostly sized this way.
Just to clarify, the in your letter, you have recipes, that's just the ratio of the liquid to the ingredient, right?
Correct.
And as the chair has asked, um you said you think you're making five gallon batches, but um have you tried this before to see what's the spirit?
Actually, yeah, we we test, we have a small batch.
And small batch means five gallons?
No, a small batch, you mean maybe uh one liter bottle or a bottle. Just to see how the flavor, you know, cuz we we try to, we pop those menus every four to six months.
And as I understand the the letter. It'll, let's say for the lychee, if you use vodka, you would like, you would use for two days and then it'd be ready to serve. And then as I understand what you said earlier, you would, whether it's a five gallon batch or whatever, you would keep that in. Rotation for service for about a month?
I would say it would never last more than a month.
Like how long?
As far as like you go through, I think you could probably go through the five gallons.
My question is rather different, how long would you keep it, what if you don't have enough customers to consume the five gallons?
Then I would say you would just kind of discard it.
Um and what if you have, what if you need to replenish it, are you starting a new batch or are you gonna add to the existing batch?
Um well, it would be a containment, yeah, you know, you're right, it's it's gonna mix, but that again, if you we we would have. Be responsible for seeing if it's gonna last or not, so it's just kind of saying like, you're saying, we don't know how long it's gonna last. But that's for us, if we're gonna overinfuse it, uh and then um it's gonna go bad, then that's not something that we wanna do.
Yeah, because it turns into a thirty day infused vodka or a two day infused vodka?
Yeah, it's still, it's still a two day infusion, but it's just, it would have been there for thirty days.
You remove, like in the lychee case, you remove the lychee?
So the lychee, the fruit is not gonna sit there for thirty days, it's just to give it that kind of like a flavor essence.
So, Mr. Chang, before I make my motion, I just wanna put a couple things of clarification on the record. And then you can answer it for the record on what we're seeing. So your position is that it will not stand longer than thirty days? Or what, give us what, stick to the timetable that you're gonna discard it?
Okay, we would discard it within thirty days.
So to be clear, from the date that it is prepared, which is on the masking tape label that you have. No more than thirty days, you will also put a discard label on it as well to say that you discard on February fourteen. So that part is clear to you, and that's what you're disclosing to us, given that. And it's specifically only for these beverages or this prep that you provided. It is not to include anything, you would have to come back and ask again, yeah, if you decide to change anything now, it's just to be clear on that. Okay, uh. Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six zero zero six, second.
Move in second, all of them favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh agenda item number nine, request number one nine dash one six zero zero six is approved with the stipulations. Vice Chair Gonabon's motion.
Yes, because uh it was not clear that those conditions with respect to the thirty day discard nor the limitation to the products listed in the letter. Was part of that approval.
Okay, so let me um restate my motion.
And expiration date.
I'll restate the motion, so motion to approve request number one nine dash one six zero zero six with the two provisions. One is that a preparation date shall be visible on the container that it is prepped. Two, a discard date no later than thirty days shall be also fixed on top of the prepped container. And maybe make one more, so the third, the third one would be that it will be discarded within thirty days from the data prep.
I second the motion.
Move in second, all of them favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, uh, June item number nine, request number one nine dash one six zero zero six is approved. Let's call uh agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one six zero one seven from Ronnie Kai Brewing Company LLC.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm staying on show with Ronnie Kai Brewing Company, that's H A U M S C H I L D. Um, happy Valentine's Day and thanks for the opportunity to revisit portions of this.
Mister, um, Humstrow, um, re-. Remind me, did you appear for this, for this violation?
Yes.
Would you were here?
Yes.
Were you here for this?
Yes.
It was a contested hearing, I believe?
Yes.
You entered a plea of no contest?
Uh, me too. I, I, I can't recall, actually.
Um, do you all, well, give me a recess and I'll go look it up?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
My back for that.
We're no in motion. We're no in motion. You have a mischot? Okay, we uh, no back on the official record, thank you. Ms. Rai.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, based upon the agenda markup for the uh, August thirty twenty eighteen hearing for uh, LCV number eighteen zero one nine four, the notation I have is uh, the plea entered was a no contest with explanation, the penalty assessed was one thousand dollars.
Okay, point of order of council, uh, there was a plea in the deal, therefore, there is no reconsideration.
So we can ask for, we can ask for reconsideration?
Yeah, it is within, uh, they're beyond the time normally filed for a, a request for reconsideration. And it is also within the commission's dis- uh, discretion to revisit uh, uh, decision and order that has been adopted at someone's request.
So you have, uh, in front of you, commission, uh, the official request from Ronnie Kai Brewing.
Motion to convene into executive session, second.
Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, can I ask one question?
Yes, I, I retract my motion.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Humstrow, we, we do have your letter with reasons for your request to reconsider, do you have anything else to add besides this?
Um, sure, so part of the um, the leg- I'm part of, I'm the vice president of the Hawaii Craft Brewers Guild. And so we are part of the body that helps draft legislation that can modernize some of the laws. So, once we realized that, um, there could be exposure from different members, we initially started drafting legislation and then submitted legislation that's currently going through the legislative process. It hasn't been kicked out and it hasn't passed, it's still going through that process. So during that time, um, from one of our other, other members made us aware that they had similar violations to what we had. With the main difference, to be my understanding, that the only main difference was that the legislative, um, information had been submitted and we're now lobbying for that. And that particular member, um, it's my understanding that their penalties were waived assuming that the legislation had passed as well as no more violations of that. And so my, my request is, um, it's my understanding, at least from our group, that I was the first to have this particular violation and learned about it and the corrections on it and try to go through the legislative process for those corrections as well. And, you know, obviously, we, when we had first had our um, customary facing bar approved with our draft system, we hadn't modified our draft system in any way, shape or form, so we were operating under the impression that we were compliant with that.
And all of this, the violation happened prior to all of the craft associations, um, efforts to get legislative, correct?
Uh, for, for this particular topic, that's correct, we weren't aware that we're, that anybody could have been out of place with it. And when we realized that, then we started drafting the legislation.
Thank you, thank you, commissioners?
Motion to convene into executive session, second.
Moved in second, we are now, uh, all over two favor.
Aye.
I, I, uh, we are now in executive session. Sorry, excuse me, I missed, I missed you there.
Knocked her over.
Okay. All right, um, we are now back on the record, uh, commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes, Chair, um, for agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one six zero seven, well, um, my motion is to deny request, second?
Been moved in second, all over two favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one six zero one seven, uh, is denied. Moving on, commissioners to, uh.
Yes, Chair, our motion for the adoption of decision and order for uh, agenda items eleven to twenty inclusive, second?
Moved in second, all over two favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, adoption of decision and order, agenda items number eleven through twenty inclusive are approved. Let's move into, uh, to the. Patient.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Ms. Rai. Deputy Corporation Counsel Monica Choi on the record for the prosecution in all agenda items number twenty-one through twenty-four.
Thank you very much, let's call agenda item number twenty-one, uh, West Metac Asian Foods.
West Metac Asian Foods attorney requested a, another continuance, he had a conflict in his schedule and also the client was not available today. Um, they requested continuance to March twenty-first, twenty nineteen, and I do not have an objection.
Thank you.
Motion to continue, continue agenda item twenty-one to March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, second?
Moved in second, all over two favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number twenty-one is continued to March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Bob Sports Bar.
Uh, licensee requests additional time to prepare their request for continuances to March fourteenth, twenty nineteen, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-two to March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, second?
Moved in second, all over two favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number twenty-two is continued to March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Bob Sports Bar.
This is a same licensee, they also request a continuance to March fourteen, twenty nineteen, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-three to March fourteen, twenty nineteen, second?
Moved in second, all over two favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number twenty-three, uh, is continued to March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty-four, Hawaii Country Club Bar and Grill.
Uh, good afternoon, or evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Swanson Shetley. S C H O E T T L E for Hawaii Country Club Bar and Grill. Um, Mr. Fong was here just a couple of days ago. And um, he expected me to handle it for him, so he returned to California. And now, he's changed his mind, he would like to not contest it, but he would like to give an explanation. So I'm asking for one short continuance until March fourteenth, uh, seventh of fourteen.
In light of, yeah, go ahead, in light of the uh, intention to plead no contest, then, uh. So let me backtrack. I'd still like to place my objection on the record, because today we were ready to proceed to a contested hearing. I have my witnesses available, but, um, in light of his intention to plead no contest and the fact that he's not here, I understand that. I, I must defer to your, your decision, because Mr. Shetley has appeared without his client.
I have a question, Mr. Shetley, are you authorized to enter, enter a plea today?
Um, if, but, I mean, if the commission denies when the first audit is happening, I don't know, I know, I know.
You're not, you're not authorized, uh, representative of the licensee?
I'm, I'm their attorney.
Au- authorized representative of the licensee?
Well, at first he wanted me to do it, and then I brought my media and now it.
I can answer that question. Mr. Shetley at one time was an authorized representative, but no longer, he's an authorized representative. So when I had to serve the notice of hearing, I had to serve it on the general manager of the premises. I'd just like to say, I mean, the licensee was duly noticed, and the licensee could have been. Your objection is known to the reference, thank you.
I have another question, maybe, um, I don't know who can answer, why does this continue from May seventeen to February nineteen?
Part of that is actually my fault, I should have pursued it uh, sooner, but I did try to contact licensee to, to obtain a date a couple of times, and I, I could not reach them, so I set an arbitrary date.
Think we need to, I'm going to executive session to see, um, legal conference.
Motion to convene into executive session, second?
Moved in second, all over two favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, we are now in executive. Okay, uh, we are now back on the record, uh, commissioners, what?
Uh, yes, Chair, seeing as that the prosecutor has represented that, um, she was ready to proceed with the contested case. Hearing that this uh, licensee seek to change their fee, but they're not represented by an authorized agent, and therefore have not appeared. Um, my motion is, uh, I move for a default judgment, second?
Moved in second, all over two favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number twenty-four, a default judgment in the amount of recommendation.
Let me go into some history here. So, on July twenty-first, twenty sixteen, this commission had issued an order. And the order was to place restrictions on the licensee in sponsoring rave type events. Following that order, September fourth, twenty sixteen, a rave-like event was held. And um, because of the egregious violation of the order, this commission revoked the license. So technically, this uh, event that was held on October twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen, is a second violation. So in a hearing to our schedule, recommended fines, I recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars. However, this commission has the discretion to impose fines to up to the maximum of two thousand.
Um, I revise my motion, uh, my motion is to enter a default judgment in the amount of two thousand dollars, second? I'm sorry, sir, you are not an authorized representative, so you may not enter, uh, you may not represent this licensee because you're not authorized.
I can tell you what this.
I'm sorry, sir, but you may not represent if you're not an authorized agent.
Mr. Shetley, do you have anything in writing saying you're authorized?
Actually, I have, I have perfect.
No, that doesn't stand, we're sorry, but this licensee did not appear today. Um, uh, let me restate my motion, motion to enter default judgment in the amount of two thousand dollars, second?
Moved in second, all over two favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number twenty-four, default, uh, twenty-four, default judgment in the amount of two thousand dollars will be issued.
Thank you, Mr. Shetley.
Let's call agenda item number twenty, sorry, twenty-five. We have, uh, we all have received the, uh, uh, legislative update from Ms. Rai. Everybody understand where we're going with all of our deals?
Yes, sir.
Okay, agenda item number twenty-six, do we have any administrative matter? We do not.